When we need it.
Since this is one of those unorthodox periods in time that nobody could have predicted anything, some special things have gone into place, including a tax penalty amnesty program.
It is a program that will be lasting through December 17, and it allows any business, doing business within the city of Los Angeles, that should, whether they're registered or not, to essentially come clean and pay for any back taxes that they owe, including principal and interest. And in exchange, the city will waive all penalties associated with those delinquent accounts during the time of a pandemic, when it's been really difficult for businesses that are struggling to allow for an opportunity to reduce that burden on them. You can submit an application online, you can call us, contact us, and our tax and permit enforcement staff are happy to help.
Do you, at the Office of Finance, offer a payment program of any kind?
We do. So as part of the tax penalty amnesty program, we offer an installment plan. And so our billing unit would be able to structure a payment plan that works for both the taxpayer and also ensures that those taxes are collected before the end of the fiscal year.
Check out the best news bites from around town. It's time for City Beat.
L.A. city attorney Mike Fuhr has announced a significant ruling in his ongoing lawsuits against three of the largest trucking companies that operate at the Port of L.A. The lawsuits allege that hundreds of drivers are purposefully being classified as independent contractors and not employees in order to evade providing benefits, paying minimum wage and appropriate taxes, and covering operating costs. To read more about the litigation, visit lacityattorney.org. The northern San Fernando Valley is getting a new walk-up COVID-19 testing supersite. The San Fernando Recreation Park in San Fernando will operate from 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Tuesday through Saturday, with up to 3,000 people per day getting tested. To register for testing, visit coronavirus.la. Having been closed for nearly eight months because of COVID-19, Skate Land Northridge, a mainstay for over 60 years, will soon transform into a 100-bed bridge housing center. The site will be operated by Hope of the Valley Rescue Mission, and the project is assisted by a $6 million loan from the city of Los Angeles. David and Mike Fleming, who own Skate Land, hope to open early next year for a few days, if it's safe for a last skate for fans.
Turning Skate Land into Hope Land, a place where people who are homeless can come, they can find shelter, they can find case management, housing navigation, job skills onsite. We would also have access to mental health services.
I can't wait to share this story with you. As a dancer, I find these women so inspirational. We get to meet the Rolets and learn more about their work to empower young women with disabilities through dance and a sense of community. Enjoy.
Choreographer Martha Graham said, "Dance is the hidden language of the soul." Our guests today know that all too well. I'm so delighted to be joined by members of the dance team, the Rolets. Connor Lundius and Catherine Elliott, so great to have you guys here. All right, straight off the bat, Dance Team the Rolets. What is it and what do you guys do?
We are a dance team made up of women with disabilities, women in wheelchairs, and our main mission is to empower other women and girls with disabilities to live boundlessly and shift perspective through dance.
Did it change how you feel about you and, you know, what you can and cannot do?
I think it's an indescribable feeling, for sure, and especially even just when we're all together as a team, the seven of us, we share a bond and share experiences that the general population doesn't understand. So it's, you feel tremendously like at ease and comfortable when you're around people who are just like you.
It's a bond like I've never experienced before, and it really gives me a sense of belonging.
We host quite a few events throughout the month virtually. We have virtual dance classes every week, as well as a virtual girls' night once a month, and you can find information about that on our website, info@roletsdance.com. It's really incredible to just see that there are so many other women out there that share the similar mindset and just want to connect and make friends and share experiences, and we're reaching women from 10 different countries around the world, so it's incredible.
This week, we also got the pleasure of chatting with Susan Burton from A New Way of Life Reentry Project. Susan's story is truly what I love most about the soul of Los Angeles, someone who made an incredible change in her life and now uses the lessons she learned to give a helping hand to others.
After years of heartache and tragedy and substance abuse, Susan Burton turned her life around, but that wasn't enough. She turned back around and extended her hand to women just like her to help them as well. And a new way of life was born. So wonderful to have you, Susan Burton, A New Way of Life founder. You were incarcerated six times due to things that you had done because of substance abuse, dealing with the pain that you were going through.
I feel my incarceration was the effects of our society, not being willing or able to deal with substance use, with the drug problems in our nation. It did become, for me, a sort of hopeless cycle of in and out, in and out, in and out, and asking for help, not knowing what type of help I needed. We have a kind, loving, comfortable environment for women to come to when they're released from prison, a place for them, a place for their children. But now we have social workers in place, we have a therapist on staff, we have attorneys to help them to get their children back, we have a legal department, we have leadership development, because I believe that when, what all that the women have been through, you go through that, you have some leadership skills. And so we support them to become leaders of their community, leaders of their household, leaders, and use their voice for good, use their vote for good.
If someone wants to get more information?
Please, you can visit us at anewwayoflife.org.
In our feature story, Joe Buscayeno is a lifelong resident of Council District 15, and the vibe of the Port communities runs deep in his DNA. I got to sit down with the council member at Dodger Stadium to talk about his work for the community in the time of a pandemic. Councilman Joe Buscayeno, welcome to our show.
Thanks, Rasha. Look at us. Here we are.
What a dream, right?
Amazing. So much history.
Yeah, you've had your own history here.
In 1992, the San Pedro High baseball team, which I was a part of, we played on this field and won the champion, the city championship.
Oh, this year, there's been so much that we've been through. So I want to talk about COVID first. It's something that's affected all of us across the Southland, and it continues to affect us. But your district already in April had rolled out some programs to help residents. Are those, could you tell us about those programs and if they're still in effect?
Of course. I'm proud that in my district, our team had to come together and find a way to feed the most vulnerable, our seniors and disabled residents. We launched a food program that helped stimulate the economy by helping bring, helping support our small businesses, our restaurants. We fed 1,000 people every week for seven weeks in a row, four days a week, and it was important for us, again, to help our local restaurants and feed those who needed us the most. We also worked with the private sector and were able to bring in half a million dollars and provide grocery cards, and we distributed them throughout the district. But I'm also proud that we were the first to house 100 homeless individuals at the Sunrise Hotel in downtown San Pedro. It was what we know it today now as a project room key that allows homeless individuals to find shelter in a bed with wraparound services.
Well, I wanted to talk to you about the homeless issue here in Los Angeles. According to the Los Angeles Homeless Services Authority, the city experienced a 14% increase in the city, but your district experienced a decrease. What do you feel contributed to that?
We saw a reduction in Council District 15, and we're thankful. We're thankful for the residents in my district who said yes to solutions, and I believe I was the first to have not one but three bridge home sites, Wilmington, San Pedro, and Watts, to move. They are now up and running. That's 300 souls that came from the sidewalks and into a bridge home shelter.
It seems in your mission, too, you're very solution-oriented, so the Housing Solutions Action Plan. Talk to me about this plan, what are some of the components? How soon do you think this plan will be implemented?
Channel 35 is getting the exclusive.
All right.
On our plan, so we've been meeting with our--
We're hearing it here first.
We've been meeting with our neighborhood council representatives in all corners of my district, and the housing plan is just set. We've got to recognize the fact that city leaders, we are elected to take action, leading with urgency, as I've often said. So this action plan is recognizing the fact that we have already hundreds of permanent supportive housing units in my district, and we're advancing more. We have about 2,000 that are already in the pipeline or have already been built that we're proud of.
I have to say, though, before we end here, you are one of those few individuals, through the most difficult times, you are always smiling.
You've got it.
And I think that just brings so much hope. I don't think I've ever been to an event, even in the most challenging times, you just bring this smile, which brings people hope, so thank you for that.
I appreciate that. It's, yeah, it's okay to smile, and, you know, as much, I'm Italian, born and raised, and we have, we're emotional, we love the hug and kiss, so I'm sending a virtual hug and a kiss to all of the city of Los Angeles.
Thank you so much. It's been a pleasure having you.
Thanks for having me.
Looking for the latest thing to do this week? Well, we've got you covered with virtual things to do.
The Los Angeles County Museum of Art presents an exhibit by L.A.-based artist Alex Prager that satirizes a specific part of working life, the opus holiday party. Created with sculptures, costumes, makeup, and props, experience these lifelike scenarios at LACMA. Visit Alex Prager. Farewell, work holiday parties, now through January 3 at the Smith Welcome Plaza, 10:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. daily. Visit lacma.org for details. Meditation is known as a healthy modality, so join longtime meditator Doug Frankel as he discusses the positive effects of meditation, particularly during the stressful holiday season.
Even during normal circumstances, the holiday season can be really stressful, but, you know, this year, we of course have the added layer of stress with the COVID situation. So it's really important, I think, for people to take a few minutes every day if they can or whenever they can to just sit still and do some self-care.
Happening Saturday, December 5 at 11:00 a.m. Email woodln@lapl.org for the Zoom link. Want to play a part in the design of the remodel of the historic Vision Theater in La Mert Park? Now's your chance. The top three design finalists for the Vision Theater Main Stage Curtain Competition are selected, and it's time to vote for the winner. The Department of Cultural Affairs Performing Arts Program is hosting the competition, where the winner gets a $5,000 award. To vote, visit culturela.org. The voting concludes on December 7, so vote today. And that's a look at some virtual things to do.
Well, that's it for this edition. I'm Rasha Goell. From all of us here at L.A. This Week, thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org, and don't forget, we're also on Facebook, Twitter, and YouTube. See you next time for more L.A. This Week.
Good morning, and welcome to the Los Angeles City Council. Today is Wednesday, December 2. I'm Nuri Martinez, the president of the City Council. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll? Bloomingfield.
Bloomingfield present.
Bonin.
Bonin present.
Buscayeno.
Here.
Deleon.
Here.
Harris Dawson. Corretz.
Present.
Krikorian.
Here.
Martinez.
Present.
O'Farrell.
Present.
Price.
Present.
Here.
Wesson.
Wesson is here.
11 members present and a quorum. Madam President. Okay, first order of business? Approval of the minutes of Tuesday, December 1. Mr. Corretz moves, and Mr. O'Farrell seconds next. Commendatory resolutions for approval. Ms. Rodriguez moves, and Mr. Harris Dawson seconds next. Madam President, would counsel like all items to go forth with today? Without objection, that would be the order. Next. Thank you, Madam President. There has been a request to continue item 3 to Wednesday, December 9. Okay, without objection, that will be the order. Item 1 is an item notice for public hearing. Items 2 through 16 are items for which public hearings have been held. Items 17 through 31 are items for which public hearings have not been held. Items 32 through 37 are items scheduled for closed session for which public hearing has been held. 10 votes are required for consideration. Okay, members, those items are now before us. Do we should call any of these items special? Mr. O'Farrell?
Madam President?
Mr. O'Farrell?
Yes, Madam President, I would like to continue item 3 on today's agenda to December the 8th, please.
Yeah, that, we just did that, that's been continued.
You did that, okay. I thought I heard a different agenda item. Thank you.
Thank you, and to confirm, it will be continued to Tuesday, December 8. Okay, Mr. Bloomingfield?
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to call item 16 special for comment.
16 special for Mr. Bloomingfield. Any others?
Madam President?
Mr. Krikorian?
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to call item 1 special for purposes of continuing the hearing date until December 8.
Okay, without objection, we'll continue that till December 8.
Thank you.
Mr. Buscayeno?
Thank you, Madam President. Nothing special. We're just hearing from the public that the volume is very low on the public side as they're trying to call in. If we can get IT to fix that, it'd be great. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We can get ITA to fix the audio on the public comment side? Okay, Madam Clerk, what items are available to vote on? We are able to vote on items 2 and 4 through 15. Okay, let's go ahead and vote on item 2 and items 4 through 15. Bloomingfield.
Bloomingfield aye.
Bonin.
Bonin aye.
Buscayeno.
Aye.
Deleon.
Aye.
Harris Dawson.
Yes.
Corretz.
Aye.
Krikorian.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
O'Farrell.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Rue. Wesson.
13 ayes. These items are adopted.
Okay, at this time, just go ahead and move on to public comment. Let me make sure that the audio has been fixed. Can you give me an update, please? Mr. Krikorian, would you like to speak on items 33 through 37 on closed session? If not, we're going to go ahead and vote on those items?
No, I think we can go ahead and vote on all of those matters in open session. Madam President, Budget and Finance considered all of them and recommends approval of the city attorney's recommendations.
Okay, let's go ahead and prepare to vote on closed session. I'm, Madam Clerk, those are items 32 through 37. Go ahead and call the roll. Thank you. If I may read into the record, for item 32, in the case entitled Nassira Torres versus Justin Taylor Stewart and the City of Los Angeles, there is a recommendation to expend up to $120,000 in settlement. Item 33, in the case entitled Ketan Patel versus City of Los Angeles, there is a recommendation to expend up to $175,000 in settlement. For item 34, in the case entitled Browning Ferris Industries of California, Inc. versus City of Los Angeles et al., there is a recommendation to approve a settlement in favor of the city valued at $100,000. For item 35, in the case entitled Silva Atwater versus City of Los Angeles, there is a recommendation to reject the settlement. For item 36, in the case entitled Christina Ripati versus City of Los Angeles, there is a recommendation to reject the settlement. And for item 37, in the case entitled Rosario Morales versus the City of Los Angeles, there is a recommendation to reject the settlement. And now to take the vote. And now to take the vote. Blumenfeld?
Blumenfeld, aye.
Bonin?
Bonin, aye.
Buscaino?
Aye.
Sadio?
Sadio, aye. Madam Chair, Madam President, Sadio, I'd like to also be added to the previous roll calls.
Give us just a second, let's just finish this vote and then we'll get to that. Go ahead and continue.
De Leon?
I'll make it easy. Aye.
Harris Dawson?
Yes.
Corretz?
Aye.
Krikorian?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Martinez?
Aye.
O'Farrell?
Aye.
Price?
Aye.
Rodriguez?
Aye.
Rue? Wesson?
Aye.
Fourteen ayes, these items are adopted.
Okay, Mr. Sadio would like to be recorded as a yes vote for the previous items.
And for the record, those previous items are two, four through fifteen. And Mr. Sadio will be recorded as an aye, so that would be fourteen ayes.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you.
Madam President? Sorry.
Yes, Mr. Buscaino?
I'd like to change my vote on item thirty-six as a no vote, though I don't think it's going to impact the outcome.
What item is that?
Thirty-six, ma'am.
Okay, let's go ahead and record as no vote for Mr. Buscaino on item thirty-six.
Thank you.
Just want to confirm from ITA that we can go ahead and move on to public comment now? Thank you. Let's go ahead and, Madam Clerk, can you please read the calling information and followed by our city attorney?
Thank you. As indicated on today's agenda, members of the public wishing to offer public comment should call 669-254-5252 and use meeting ID number 1605358466 and then press pound. Then press pound again when prompted for participant ID. Once admitted into the meeting, press star nine to request to speak. Let me repeat, call 669-254-5252 and use meeting ID number 1605358466 and then press pound. Then press pound again when prompted for participant ID. Once admitted into the meeting, press star nine to request to speak.
To members of the public calling in, when it's your turn to speak, please state which of the agenda items you'd like to speak on. You have one minute per item to speak, up to three minutes total, and one minute for general public comment if you wish. Please start with the items before providing general public comment. We'll tell you when your time's up. When speaking on the agenda items, you must be on topic. Our goal is to get through as many speakers as we can. If you're not speaking on topic, or if you can't tell, we can't tell whether you're speaking on topic, you'll get one brief warning from me or the president. If you do not immediately get clearly on topic or against re-off topic, the president will cut you off and you'll forfeit the rest of your speaking time and we'll move on to the next speaker. We'll take thirty minutes total of public comment. The items that are open for public comment are items seventeen through thirty-one only. That's seventeen through thirty-one. Number thirty-eight is a special agenda item, which we'll deal with later. Finally, for members of the public calling in to speak, as soon as you hear someone address you by providing the last four digits of your phone number or other identifying information if you're calling in on a block number, that means you're live in the council meeting, please immediately press star six to unmute yourself, that's star six, so that you can tell us which items you want to speak on. We understand that you might be listening on your computer or other device, please keep one ear to the phone so that you hear us address you and you can immediately press star six. Also, turn down the volume on your other devices because there's slight time delay and we might get feedback as well. Thank you, Madam President, and we're ready to take public comment.
Caller with the phone number ending in 0899, please press star six.
Hi, this is Stacy Dawson Sterns calling. I'd like to speak on eighteen and nineteen, please.
Sure, so you have two minutes for the items. Please go ahead.
Okay, thanks. All right, so we didn't get a say about the Olympics, so we're going to have our say now. The Olympics are a policing and a displacement nightmare, and we never got a say. We're sitting here in a situation where we're in, we're in 2020, we've got a massive pandemic, people are going to be evicted. I don't know what it's going to look like in 28, but I know that the last thing that we're going to want is 3,000 cops on the street trying to sweep us away. We don't need Casey Wasserman to be making big bucks off of our suffering. The Olympics are a lie. They are founded on complete white supremacist ideals. There's a legacy of abuse that is unacknowledged. Mayor Garcetti refuses to acknowledge sexual harassment in his own office, much less in the Olympics, hasn't acknowledged it. Casey Wasserman has made a living off of covering up sexual assault cases, and it's all in the name of sports. Let's just table that, guys. I'm against it all, everybody's against it all. And to our council members, especially one of our newer ones, this is an opportunity to acknowledge that the problems that we're having now and the things that we're crying for, like humanitarian aid for our unhoused neighbors, this is tied into it. We don't want to green light cops working with the Department of Homeland Security. We don't. We don't want to turn into a police state. We're turning things around. I yield the rest of my time. Thanks for listening.
Thank you, Speaker.
Caller with the phone number ending in 7719, please press star six. Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Thank you. It's Eric Previn, and I'll speak on the available items and general public comment.
Sure, so you have, Mr. Previn, you have three minutes for items seventeen through thirty-one, followed by one minute for general public comment. Please begin.
Yeah, I just had a quick question because the telecast didn't come on for item thirty-two and thirty-three. We did hear that item thirty-four was a $100,000 victory for the city over Browning Ferris, longtime repped by Englander Kenavion Allen and Arnie Bergoff, so that's probably a friendly fire lawsuit regarding the Sunshine Canyon landfill, but can you give me the terms on thirty-two and thirty-three?
We'll do that later, Mr. Previn. I don't have it at my fingertips right now.
That's very disappointing. All right, let's talk about the Olympics for a moment. Swim LA 1.0 and 2.0, each cost about $2 million plus. So we've reduced the 160 million that was set aside by the Olympic Committee for the Parks and Rec Group to teach kids swimming. We're down to 155 million to use through 2028. You know, good work, giant asterisk, because of course we want kids to be able to swim, but the former caller, the prior caller talked about the priorities that are being adjusted to make the Olympics work for the City of Los Angeles, when the City of Los Angeles has really onboarded some significant problems. Now, Mayor Garcetti, who's been angling to become the Secretary of Transportation, and Phil Washington will do the picking there, so probably won't be Garcetti because you don't pick your boss. That doesn't look very good. He's working for the Biden group, but you know, the, the City of Los Angeles and the metro have bent over backwards to get things in order for more stadium-style people moving so that we can fill these stadiums full of affluent people from around the world who flood our area for three weeks in 2028. That obviously is not a very smart civic priority, even though we all love, I love, I can say this, I didn't agree 100%, I like the idea of the Olympics and of competition at the highest level if it were fair and square, but the IOC has been such a corrupted organization, I mean, you know, the World Cup, all these big sporting franchises, thanks to not just Casey Wasserman, to these businessmen who've rolled along in this direction, are, you know, sort of strangling our city from meaningful population-based development. We don't want to become a place that cleans the beds of people from other places and just does menial labor to bring in these folks who spend money here. We also want to have meaningful jobs. When I see that we are, have an innovative partnership with NBC Universal, I tip my hat to Mr. Rue as he heads off, and I say, is that really our goal to be one of the big media players? And all of these council members who approved these deals are going to be basically termed out by the time 2028 comes, so they'll be, you know, hanging out on rooftop bars that they orchestrated to have built, and the regular folk will simply starve. And I'm worried about it, I'm really worried about it. I wish that the metro was focusing on restoring bus ridership so that folks could actually get around our city. I wish that there was a meaningful transit system, you know, as opposed to these disgusting overages that come one after the other under the auspices of these very folks, the fiscally conservative Paul Krikorian loves to, you know, bang his little fist on the desk and go, "We are screwed." Well, we are screwed, and to continue to, you know, dress it up with a swim lesson is not going to get us through, so I, I just wish I had a better outcome. All these vacations of property fallible. This is where you understand city property is sort of gifted because it's not at market value. They do pay at 10,000 or, the one that caught my attention in Buscaino's district was item number twenty-eight, a 96,000.
Thank you, Mr. Previn. And for the record, sorry that the audio had gone out before, the settlement for number thirty-two was $120,000, and the settlement for number thirty-three was 175,000.
Caller with the phone number ending in 6068, please press star six. Caller with the phone number ending in 6068, please press star six. Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Hi, yes, this is Richie Sirdenko. I'd like to speak on item eighteen, nineteen, and general public comment, please.
Sure, so you have two minutes for the items, followed by one minute for general public comment.
Yeah, eighteen and nineteen are both related to the LA 28 Olympics. I wonder, you know, everything that the people of Los Angeles have been calling in to the council about over the past year, you know, things such as housing and defund the police and we need more housing, well, the Olympics only caused more gentrification and they, they only cause a growth of the homeless population. It's been proven in every single location that the Olympics have been held in. So LA is not going to be any different. So by not taking a stand on the Olympics, you're essentially saying it's okay that gentrification and tens of thousands of people are going to be out on the streets in 2028. And I mean, you won't be in office or you won't be in city council then, so it doesn't really matter to you, but that's what's going to happen, and it's happened everywhere. And LA is not going to be different. So, I mean, you can keep staring it in the face and be like, "Oh, we're not going to do anything about it," but you know, that, this is what's coming. So are you going to step up and do something about it? Or, and you know, when people are calling in to say defund the police, that means we want less police. We, we don't want the police on our streets anymore. The Olympics are only going to bring more police to LA, and 3,000 more police when people are saying we want less police. Like, and that's in 2028, like, and, and the defund the police movement in Los Angeles led by Gillem, you know, has been proven effective and has only gained more momentum. So what do you think's going to happen in a year, two years, five years, and eight years? You know, we don't want the fucking police, and the Olympics only mean more policing. And so that's just something like, I, you know, I wonder what's going on over there because it, it's already been said, there's going to be more police, and we're saying less police. How can you justify that by bringing the, by bringing the?
So you have general public comment if you wish, Speaker.
General public comment? I mean, I think it was pretty despicable for anyone that voted for Joe Buckets, item thirty-three yesterday, to continue sweeps in San Pedro. Joe, I heard you correct my pronunciation of it yesterday. I'm still going to come tear down that flag off your house, but I think all the city council members that voted in favor of item thirty-three yesterday, like, so you all are okay with going into these guidelines for sweeps? And, you know, we're in a pandemic, this is when people need shelter. We need to fill the rooms agreed to under Project Room Key. You know, this is, this is something that I can't believe is, is really going on. Like, we don't have enough housing where people in Los Angeles say you want to continue sweeps in the middle of a pandemic, and we know, when we know one of the most important things to keeping people safe from COVID is shelter, and how can the unshelter shelter in place?
Thank you, Speaker.
Caller with the phone number ending in 4208, please press star six. Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Yeah, I'd like to speak on item eighteen and general public comment.
Sure, you have one minute for each. Please go ahead.
Yeah, I think it's interesting that, you know, we're still talking about the Olympics, and, you know, some of you aren't going to be around the horseshoe at that point, very few of you, actually. But we're going to be looking back at those photos of when you had your oversized scissors and golden shovels and all that kind of crap, and we're going to see a bunch of people that are now indicted or in jail, like Mitch Englander, like Jose Weezar, maybe Congressman Wesson, I don't know. We just always think of the IOC as a very corrupt, flawed organization, and the response has been, "Oh, LA's done it before, and you know, we'll do it." You're not, you've proven that you are the epitome of the swamp. There's no way to do this right here, and we shouldn't be wasting money on this shit. I, I want to just address something that came up earlier, and that was the issue purportedly of low volume. Let me be clear, there was no audio other than the hold music until you started to read off the closed session items. This is something we've complained about for months, and now only when we got Big Patty from the harbor complaining to Joey Buckets do we get you to take it mildly seriously. You know, we can look across the board at how you've handled public comment, how the council president has failed to establish any regular rules here. Months ago, you added this whole star six thing when our four numbers get called out. That's nowhere on the fucking agenda. So it just makes no sense, the way you've handled this, there's no veiled attempt to even uphold the Brown Act. It's all pretty pathetic, and on that note, Councilmember Rue, I've been trying to lay off you a little bit since I know you're a little bruised up, but, bro, you haven't filed any of your door hangers, flyers, or lit mailers, anything that you sent out in the last two weeks of the campaign?
Caller with the phone number ending in 8420, please press star six. Caller with the phone number ending in 8420, please press star six. Caller with the phone number ending in 8420, please press star six. Caller with the phone number ending in 1148, please press star six. Caller with the phone number ending in 1148, please press star six. Caller with the phone number ending in 5245, please press star six. Caller with the phone number ending in 5245, please press star six. Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
I'd like to speak on all available items and general public comment.
Sure, so you have three minutes for items seventeen through thirty-one and one minute for general public comment. Please begin.
Yeah, yes, thank you. You deliberately muted, did not let me in yesterday, you have a lawsuit coming for that, and you did the same thing, you muted me today, but thank goodness I have two phones. Apologize to Ms. Autry Martinez, item number twenty, you have $2 million going for William's Winter Shelter Program. What, $2 million for, you're taking from COVID-19 funds? When you gave $600,000 to the LAPD yesterday, $200,000 to the LAPD yesterday, item thirty and twenty-seven, this is disgusting. This isn't even human. $2 million for the Winter Shelter Program, that's all you think of, of people dying out on the street. You gave $750,000 grant last two, last Wednesday to the LAPD. You gave $750,000 grant last two, last Wednesday to the LAPD. We're watching and adding these things up. You people are criminal. You give $2 million to Dawson over the last 18 months for luxury office moves, but $2, $2 million for the Winter Shelter Program? Joey Bucket, I don't know why people call him that. I call him Buscayanos. You're an ass. Want to throw people out on the street. You have your PSA announcements going on before the, the council meetings, but they mean nothing. People are looking, they're watching. Jackie Lacy thought she could go ahead and just do whatever the damn hell she wanted. She's out. Look at Wesson. Appointed Martinez, thought he was going to get the Hispanic vote, but you're out. People are watching. Rue, you're out. $2 million and you're giving tens, tens of millions. Krikorian withdrew item number one, $12 million for some improvement of educational facility. This is a vote trading. All votes public are yes votes, vote swaps. It's illegal. It guarantees all city councilmen like Buscayanos yesterday and his sweeps of the homeless, just shoot them, shoot them. Why don't we? Will be voted yes.
So can we get, can we get back on the, the items more, could we get back on the items, Speaker?
Yeah, item number, uh, 18. Uh, the Olympics, yes, more gentrification, uh, especially coming from, um, uh, our communities, black community with Dawson, who is the gentrifier in chief. You're not putting any money into the people.
Okay.
The people are sick and tired of.
You can go into general public comment if you want, Speaker.
Thank you, sir. Let's take a roll call. Garcetti's deputy mayor indicted. I don't know nothing about that. Wesson's chief of staff indicted. Wesson, I don't know anything about that. Englander, councilman indicted. John Lee with his, Get It Wet John Lee, with his backdating checks with Englander on his way to indictment. Jose Wezard indicted. Price investigated. You people are, are just the lowest of the low and the people are understanding it. People, the only way to get these people out is to vote them all out. Bonin was the only decent person yesterday voted no on Buscayanos kicking the, the shelter, kicking the homeless into the street.
Caller with the phone number ending in 6162, please press star six. Please state your name and the items you'd like to speak on.
My name is Jim Alger. I'd like to speak on public comment, uh, general public comment.
Sure. You have a minute. Please go ahead.
If I could take one second to say hello to, uh, Nury Martinez, it's been a while since we worked together in the Senate office and congratulations, I haven't spoken to her since she took her position here. But my reason for the call today is I'm responding to public comments made by a city council member publicly calling for the closure of Whiteman Airport. Whiteman Airport was built on a farm in 1946. Los Angeles allowed the land to be developed, eventually coming right up to the fence line, and now complains that an aircraft crashed near homes. Whiteman is one of the last homes for over 500 small aircraft, averaging over 300 flight operations a day. These aircraft have been pushed from Van Nuys and Burbank Airport jet traffic. Whiteman is home to flight schools, aircraft maintenance, and dozens of certified flight instructors serving the underprivileged communities of the San Fernando Valley. Whiteman is home to Senior Squadron 35, Cadet Squadron 137, and Los Angeles County Group One of the Civil Air Patrol, an auxiliary department of the United States Air Force that serves the city and county of Los Angeles for everything from locating down aircraft to assistance after an earthquake. Sadly, it was a Civil Air Patrol aircraft that actually crashed on final approach.
Thank you, Speaker.
Sir, can you please state your name one more time?
I'm sorry?
Can you please state your name one more time?
It was Jim Alger. And if I could have 10 more seconds, I just want to read my final paragraph.
Sorry, sir, your time is up. Caller with the phone number ending in 1125, please state your name. Caller with the phone number starting with, ending with 1125, please press star six. Caller with the phone number ending in 1125, please press star six. Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Hello. Hello, can you hear me?
Yes. Which items would you like to speak on?
On items number 18, 19, and, uh, general public comment, please.
Okay. So you have two minutes for the items, followed by one minute for general public comment. Please begin.
Hi, my name is Johnny. I'm a volunteer with No Olympics LA. We're a coalition of several dozen, dozen groups in the area. Um, we've been opposing the Olympics for years at this point. You've heard our voices many times. Um, maybe not some of the newer members. To reiterate what basically every caller has said, the Olympics present a huge policing and displacement nightmare that none of you are publicly reckoning with. We're watching, we're listening, uh, we're monitoring everything going on. We know the threats. We know the Super Bowl is around the corner as well, and the World Cup. We know that Airbnb is now 10 years partners with the IOC leading through the completion of LA 2028. We know what that means, right? And you all know what that means. So what we need you all to do is to start asking those questions yesterday, right? These tough questions, like, where is the money going? Why was there no public participation to, participation to begin with? Why were the polls that you all relied so heavily on by Fernando Guerra at LMU treated as credible when he was a registered lobbyist for Olympic developers? Right? Right? So we need you today, right now, to start talking about this because it's literally your fucking job, okay? And what I'm going to need from everyone to do as well is to start talking to us and starting meeting with this. Because this is not going away. It's actually just going to magnify intensely as, as the days and weeks and years go long. And we'll be there for every single second of it. So, uh, with that said, uh, you know, I'd like to leave you with, um, a story that happened in 2018, um, when most, when we were paying attention to this bid, when, um, the 180 survivors of Larry Nassar, you know, an Olympic doctor, specifically called out Eric Garcetti and LA 28 bid, bid chief Casey Wasserman for their lack of accountability with that issue. How dare you talk about youth sports in our city when we all know that the IOC and the Olympic shell systems and youth sports systems are insanely abusive?
And you can go on to general public comment if you wish, Speaker. You can go to general public if you want.
Okay. Uh, so generally speaking, um, this is an issue that will come up and be threaded through every single choice and every single vote as things go through, from transit to disability to acceptability, to housing homelessness, policing, security, um, and all the money that's attached to that. And you're going to, today, you're planning on punting, um, the, the project was, the project was rubber stamped over three and a half years ago and the bid was around for two to three years before that. It's been basically six years of this process and none of you all have made a single concrete decision about anything or been transparent in any, in any facet, right? So that's the greatest period ever, but like, right now, you have to start talking about it today, right? That's it. I yield my time.
Thank you, Speaker.
Caller with the phone number ending in 3841, please press star six. Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Hi, my name is Santa Camas. I'd like to speak on items 18, 19, and public comment.
Sure. So you have two minutes for the items, followed by one minute for general public comment. Please begin.
Cool. So I actually want to start off with a little history lesson because it seems like y'all are completely out of touch with the type of impact that an Olympic plan can have in LA. And I'm reading from a book that was published in the Minnesota Press by Dr. Damian Emso Joyner. And it goes like this. "The 1984 Olympic Games in Los Angeles, as a pivotal point in the development of heavily militarized LAPD and the intensification of brutal punitive enclosure upon black communities against the backdrop of the Cold War and the conjured threat of the USXR, in conjunction with the events that unfolded at the 1972 Manage Games, LA city officials and the LAPD successfully, successfully lobbied the federal government to provide funding to expand the LAPD workforce and attain some of the most sophisticated military weaponry on the face of the planet. However, after the games were over, the LAPD did not move to return its arsenal or scale back its labor force. The threat was nearly changed from an outside terrorist force to a domestic force, the hyper-violent, drug peddling, gun-toting, black criminal. I bring this up because the Olympics would create a policing and displacement nightmare. Shame on y'all for thinking that we need, as being on COVID land, that we need the Olympics in the middle of a pandemic. Herb, although you lost your reelection, I want to remind you that when Melina Abdullah endorsed you and you used your political advice, advertisement with that endorsement, you are still part of this community and you will be held responsible if you don't speak up on Olympics. Harris Dawson, stop using community policing for policing. Stop using the images of black children getting along with police officers in South Central when they are part of the reason why communities have been completely stabilized.
You can, you can go to general public comment if you want, Speaker.
I yield my time.
Okay. Thank you.
Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Hi, my name's Kenny Barnyard. I'm going to speak on 18, 19, and public comment, please.
So you have two minutes for the items, followed by one minute for public, general public comment. Please begin.
Great. Uh, yeah, I'd just like to do a little signal boost for the last caller. Um, anyone that's interested in how, uh, the 1984 LA Olympics, uh, directly caused the 1992 LA riots, um, can Google LA Olympics Riot. It's a, an article in The Nation, um, pretty much talks about all the things people are talking about today. Um, but yeah, I also wanted to talk about, um, how we're going to pay for this, um, when it eventually goes over budget. The Tokyo Olympics are about, uh, 30 to 40 billion dollars over budget. Um, and I was just wondering how we're going to pay for that when that happens. Um, I imagine that the taxpayers will be on the hook and not, um, Casey Wasserman or his billionaire buddies. Um, Casey Wasserman's worth about 400 million bucks. I make 40K a year. So, um, if he wants to throw in some of his personal money, um, I would rather not pay for this nightmare. Uh, Angelenos need housing now. We don't need the Olympics. We don't need to be thinking about how we're going to be spending money for rich people to come in here and have a three-week, uh, vacation. Poor people in LA are dying every day because they don't have housing. So spending money on these reduced swimming lessons will do nothing to confront this housing crisis. LA is ejecting people from vacant taxpayer-owned homes the day before Thanksgiving. So don't talk about caring about kids or reduced swimming lessons when cops are dragging 10-year-old children out into the cold before the holidays. We don't want 3,000 more cops in our city, over policing poor people, black people and brown Angelenos so that rich folks can come here and have a good time for three weeks. Um, also want to lift up that there is so much abuse of all with the Olympics. The, all of the children, the abused, sexually abused children, um, the survivors of Larry Nassar, uh, called on Los Angeles to put this partnership on hold. Why are we not listening to people that have been harmed by this event that you're trying to bring to the public?
You can go into general public comment if you wish, Speaker.
No one but rich people in Los Angeles. Uh, so Google, uh, LA Olympics Riot is the Nation article. I yield my time.
Thank you, Speaker.
Okay, members, that concludes general public comment and public comment on this, um, today's agenda. So we're going to go ahead and, uh, just prepare to vote. Madam Clerk on items 17 through 31. Go ahead and call the roll. Blumenfeld?
Blumenfeld, aye.
Bonin?
Bonin, aye.
Buscayino?
Aye.
Sadio?
Aye.
DeLeon?
Aye.
Harris Dawson?
Aye.
Coretts?
Aye.
Krikorian?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Martinez?
Aye.
O'Farrell?
Aye.
Price?
Aye.
Rodriguez?
Aye.
Rue?
Aye.
Wesson?
Yes.
And Wesson? Wesson? Councilmember Wesson?
15 ayes. These items are adopted.
Can I just move on to item 16? This item was called special by Mr. Blumenfield for comments.
Thank you, Madam Chair, or Madam President. Um, so this item instructs lasers in the city departments to build a robust divestment framework and a plan to encourage our pension system to begin stepping away from fossil fuels. The evidence is really clear right now that fossil fuel investments pose a serious risk to our portfolio and at the moment, we've got over 150 million dollars invested into these companies. I introduced this measure, uh, over a year ago and since then, we have seen the hottest day on record in my district, it was over 120 degrees. We've seen a nearly endless barrage of wildfires, destructive hurricanes throughout this country, and climate change isn't waiting around for us to get our ducks in a row on divestment. The time is now to come up with a robust plan to identify our riskiest assets and make a solid plan to move away from these investments and toward a more fiscally and environmentally responsible investment, uh, opportunity. Oil shares are plummeting and we know the fossil, the fossil fuel industry is not going to be here forever. In a prudent, fiscally responsible way, this motion will encourage lasers to create a divestment framework similar to what they're already doing in San Francisco, which has been an operation successfully for five years and has moved aggressively to divest from the worst actors and to establish a watch list of the riskiest investments. Now, I've worked with some amazing local environmental groups that have been instrumental in rallying support for this important measure, uh, including the San Fernando Valley chapter of 350.org, Climate Reality, Temple Isaiah Green Team, Climate Resolve, the Neighborhood Council Sustainability Alliance, and many, many more groups. There is a lot of momentum. I also want to thank my staff, especially James Conlon, who worked really hard on this issue, and just to thank everyone who's been writing in and calling, uh, on this issue for a long time. Colleagues, uh, I encourage an aye vote on this measure. Thank you.
Mr. Coretts?
Thank you. And I, I wanted to first thank, uh, Mr. Blumenfeld for, uh, bringing this forward. Uh, it is desperately needed. We know this is one of the significant steps that we can take against climate change. Um, and we know that these are terrible investments that are getting worse by the day. Um, so the time is now to get out of them. Uh, the fact is, we're leading the effort to try to make these bad investments by reducing, uh, the usage of, of oil and gas and moving towards alternative energy sources that don't provide greenhouse gases. And so it doesn't make sense for us to be investing in them as they go downhill and as we try to be a national leader in making them go downhill. So I, I think at this point for the city of Los Angeles, this is truly a no-brainer. It's something we absolutely must do and, uh, I would join in asking for your aye vote.
Okay, members, just prepare to vote on item number 16. Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Blumenfeld?
Blumenfeld, aye.
Bonin?
Bonin, aye.
Buscayino?
Aye.
Sadio?
Sadio, aye.
DeLeon?
Aye.
Harris Dawson?
Yes.
Coretts?
Aye. 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 Aye.
Aye.
Krikorian?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Martinez?
Aye.
O'Farrell?
Aye.
Price?
Aye.
Rodriguez?
Aye.
Rue?
Aye.
Wesson?
Aye.
Fifteen ayes. This matter is adopted.
Okay, Madam Clerk, at this time, let's go ahead and recess our regular meeting and begin our special meeting. Please call the roll.
Blumenfeld?
Blumenfeld, aye.
Bonin?
Bonin, present.
Buscaino?
Here.
Sadio?
Sadio, aye.
DeLeon? DeLeon?
Aye.
Harris Dawson?
Yes.
Coretts?
Present.
Krikorian?
Here.
Lee?
Present.
Martinez?
Present.
O'Farrell?
Present.
Price?
Present.
Rodriguez?
Here.
Rue?
Here.
Wesson?
Ever-present.
Thank you. Fifteen members present in a quorum. Madam President.
Okay, let's move on to, we have item 38.
Yes, thank you. Would council like the item on today's special agenda to go forth with?
Yeah, without objection.
Thank you. That item 38 is an item for which a public hearing has been held.
We should take public comment in any case, however.
Can I just go ahead and open the phone lines?
Let me just read out the information one more time. So as indicated on the agenda, members of the public wishing to offer a public comment on item 38 only should call 669-254-5252. That's 669-254-5252, and use meeting ID number 1605358466. That's 1605358466, and then press pound, and press pound again when prompted for participant ID. Once admitted into the meeting, press star nine to request to speak. Once you hear someone identify you by the last four digits of your phone number or other identifying information, if you're calling in using a block number, that means you're the person ready to speak. Please press star six right away to unmute yourself. The only item that you can speak on is item 38, not anything else, not general public comment, and we'll tell you when your time's up, and we'll take up to 10 minutes of public comment on this, if we have that many speakers.
Caller with the phone number ending in 5540, please press star six. Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on. Please state your name and speak on item 38.
Watkins, on behalf of the applicant for the Promenade 2035 project?
Please go ahead.
This is Cindy Sarret from Latum, on behalf of the applicant for the Promenade 2035 project, which will transform an existing shopping center into a mixy sustainable project consistent with the vision of the Warner Center 2035 specific plan. With the leadership of Councilmember Blumenfeld, we voluntarily included 10% affordable housing. We appreciated the unanimous approval by the City Planning Commission and Plum's unanimous recommendation that the CEQA appeal should be denied, and the supplemental EIR and staff's recommendations to deny the CEQA appeals should be adopted. This is an important project for the district. It has hundreds of supporters, and we look forward as we plan for the recovery from COVID-19 to wonderful projects like this for the future, and we ask that the council approve the staff recommendation, the Plum recommendation, the commission recommendation, and move forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Speaker.
Caller with the phone number ending in 1983, please press star six. Please state your name and speak on item 38.
Yeah, hi. Good morning. My name is Stuart Waldman. I am president of the Valley Industry and Commerce Association, VICA. VICA fully supports the Westfield Promenade project as it will help elevate the economic vitality and stability of the San Fernando Valley and its residents at a time when it is desperately needed. With almost 2 million people, we deserve our own entertainment center instead of always having to drive to downtown or the west side for events. Repurposing the old Promenade Mall into an innovative, new green urban center is a smart idea that will generate thousands of new jobs for years to come and offer much-needed amenities in the Warner Center. The project's significant boost to the local economy and to city tax revenues that support public services will be critical to the future as we work on recovering from the current health and economic crisis. Over 1,000 residential units is also a positive step that will help address the city's current housing crisis. We urge you to allow this important project to move forward today.
Thank you, Speaker.
Caller with the phone number ending in 8420, please press star six. Caller with the phone number ending in 8420, please press star six. Please state your name and speak on item 38.
Hi, my name is Astrid Cota. I was wondering if I can get an extra minute since I got dropped earlier?
No. I didn't remember.
My number was called and I pressed star six, and then I got hung up on, so.
So do you want to speak on item 38?
Yeah, but can I also just get one extra minute?
No, you just get one minute on item 38, so please begin with your one minute now.
All right, so I'm opposing this appeal for redeveloping the existing Westfield Promenade Shopping Center located within the Warner Center specific plan. So you want to expand this thing, 28-story office tower proposing 5,655 parking spaces? Who is this for? That's my question. Who is this going to benefit? Who is going to lose? I'm guessing that the 5% very low-income housing units, that they're going to be affected by this. Who's going to be affected by this? Who is this for? I completely oppose it. We shouldn't be tearing down more land and building more buildings or parking spaces. We need to be either creating more green spaces or providing housing for people that need it. I yield my time.
Thank you, Speaker.
Caller with the phone number ending in 8670, please press star six. Please state your name and speak on item 38.
Hi, my name is Luis Porras. I'm the business agent with Local 761. I'm a proud member of Plumber's Union, 761. Approving the Westfield Promenade project sends a strong message that Los Angeles may be hurting right now, but we need to rebuild and come back strong. This project represents a billion-dollar investment in our future and will create more than 19,000 jobs. That's correct, 19,000 jobs. We need this. They follow the rules, working with the community, and are a longtime member of this community. We need this project, and we need to send a message to our other longtime businesses in the city to invest and start planning for our recovery. Let's send a hopeful message to every worker out there that this is a temporary setback, and our great city will come back strong. Counsel, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Speaker.
Caller with the phone number ending in 1148, please press star six. Please state your name and speak on item number 38.
Yes, item number 38. I'm surprised you didn't mute me again. Item number 38 is a huge development. It's going to pass because LA City Council, it doesn't matter what proposal, doesn't matter how bad it is, it's going to pass because LA City Council vote trades or vote swaps 100% yes votes. This project is huge, and the public should scrutinize it in very, very close detail. It doesn't matter how much gentrification or how much damaging it is to the public. You're going to overlook it unless we police you. Just like the Crenshaw Mall, Dawson does not support the community and the union-owned investment. He's going to the Trump ownership on that one, and I suspect the same thing is happening with this one. If it does bring good jobs, wonderful, wonderful for the union.
Thank you, Speaker.
But the displacement of anybody should be turned down. One thing I'm surprised, this does not have a dollar amount.
Caller with the phone number ending in 0899, please press star six. Please state your name and speak on item number 38.
Hi, this is Stacy Dustin Stern speaking on 38. I just want to list up here some stuff that really gets bypassed here when we're talking about very low-income units. I want to point out that all low-income units, all affordable housing units expire, those designations expire after 50 years. So we're looking at the future of our city, and we're like, oh, great, let's put 5% very low-income housing units. Maybe a generation here out there, maybe two, until they're put out on the street again. And I also want to lift up that workforce housing is an industry term. It's not protected by law anywhere, and this is a developer practice. I also want to lift up the fact that your constant decisions to kind of grant these sort of overriding considerations or waivers of having to go through applications for variances that you do on almost every big-ass development because you have great relationships with lobbyists that work for these LLCs, you do this, and then that just bypasses any kind of public hearings. So if someone's like, oh, yeah, by the way, we're just going to like...
Caller with the phone number ending in 7719, please press star six. Please state your name and speak on item number 38.
Thank you. It's Eric Previn from Studio City, and this is obviously the Westwood LLC project, the Westwood Promenade LLC, Westfield. Now, obviously, a giant development out in Blumenfeld District has a lot of appeal to some of the locals, but I thought that Fabel was exceptionally rude to the prior speaker, who was making a very good point, that by bending over backwards and doing, you know, small modifications to get folks to sign off, like the 5% of very affordable, let's remember also that there are 572 hotel rooms embedded in this project. So there comes the transit occupancy tax waiver. Pretty soon, you'll see John Wickham walking around with little file where he gives away money to these folks who are setting up giant vacuum cleaners of the public who are going out of business, generally, his money, into these giant centers. I love that Stuart Waldman called it a new green urban center. By new green, he means extremely expensive because Garcetti and others can use the desire to get this going to make them put in certain things, but putting a giant building in a beautiful...
Thank you, Speaker.
Okay, that concludes public comment on this item?
Yes.
So go ahead and prepare to vote on item 38.
Madam Speaker, may I speak on this?
Oh, I didn't see your hand. There you go.
Sorry, I might have been...
Did you? Who's speaking?
It's Bob Blumenfield.
I didn't, your hand's not up, so that's why I didn't recognize who was speaking.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Apologize, it was supposed to be up. It's up now.
I can see it.
Great. Okay, this is a really important project for the city and for my district. As I said in the Plum hearing, I didn't support the appeal of the EIR. The EIR is supplemental to the existing EIR for the Warner Center specific plan, and I really believe that the environmental analysis of Promenade 2035 plan is more than adequate. I also want to point out that this is the very first project in the Warner Center to include affordable units. It is being built on what was formerly a shopping mall that has basically been a ghost for a number of years. It's a dead shopping mall and a huge parking lot, and it is being transformed into something special, housing, green areas, and an entertainment complex. It is transformative. The affordable units that the project has established is also creating a standard for Warner Center projects in the future, and it's a laudable action. I'm grateful to URW. They heard my call for diversity in housing, and it was only after a lot of hard work and community involvement. But the project now includes 5% very low-income housing, a voluntary 5%, it's built into the program, another 5% of what's workforce housing, but contrary to what the caller said, it's defined what workforce housing is. It's 120% AMI and 5% stakeholder housing, which is also defined in the agreement in terms of folks who live in the Warner Center or work in the Warner Center, I'm sorry, so they will work there and live there. So that's 15% overall. It's a game changer in the community. Not only is it affordable housing, but it's going to be great jobs, including thousands of skilled labor jobs, construction jobs, and it includes an entertainment complex that will be the gem of the community and enable this live-work-play environment that was envisioned in the Warner Center plan and that all of us talk about as the future of green planning, to be able to have a mini-city that you can be within this larger city where you can get your culture and entertainment and jobs and work all in a smaller area for less of a carbon footprint. When it was before Plum, we had so many callers, it was like a who's who of the West San Fernando Valley. The project now has tremendous support. The developers did a really good job. They worked with the community for years, ironed out the concerns that were there. It's gone through extensive public hearings. It is now a win-win project that will be great for the community and great for this city. I also want to acknowledge Elva O'Donnell, who's a case planner who is retiring and has been very instrumental on this project and has done a great job moving it forward. So with that, colleagues, I enthusiastically ask for your aye vote.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Blumenfeld. Let's go ahead and prepare to vote on this item. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Blumenfeld?
Blumenfeld, aye.
Bonin?
Bonin, aye.
Buscaino?
Aye.
Sadio? DeLeon?
Aye.
Harris Dawson?
Yes.
Coretts?
Aye.
Krikorian?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Martinez?
Aye.
O'Farrell?
Aye.
Price?
Aye.
Rodriguez?
Enthusiastic aye.
Rue?
Aye.
Wesson?
Aye.
Fourteen ayes. This item is adopted.
Okay, what's before us? Just go ahead and adjourn our special meeting and go into our regular meeting. And then you can tell me what's next.
Thank you. Would you like for me to call the roll to reconvene the regular meeting?
Yes, please.
Blumenfeld?
Blumenfeld, present.
Bonin?
Bonin, present.
Buscaino?
Here.
Sadio? DeLeon?
Here.
Harris Dawson?
Yes.
Coretts?
Present.
Krikorian?
Here.
Lee?
Present.
Martinez?
Present.
O'Farrell?
Present.
Price?
Present.
Rodriguez?
Here.
Rue?
Here.
Wesson?
Here.
Fourteen members present in a quorum, Madam Chair.
Okay, what's before us?
Madam President, there are four verbal motions for the council.
Okay, go ahead and start with the first one.
First is a commendatory resolution introduced by Councilmember Harris Dawson relative to honoring and always remembering the legacy of Aristio Thomas. Is there a second to this commendatory resolution?
Sir, a second?
Second.
Second, and Mr. Price, next?
Next is... Next is a motion introduced by Councilmember Krikorian and Price, and seconded by Councilmember Lee, referred to the Information Technology and General Services Committee relative to instructing the Department of General Services to develop a plan identifying opportunities that are presented to reduce or eliminate lease space due to reduction in personnel or increase telecommuting or remote operations.
I just need to verify, Mr. Price, you are a co-author, and Mr. Lee, you're the
Confirmed.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, next.
Next is a motion introduced by Councilmember Krikorian and Councilmember Harris Dawson, and seconded by Councilmember Lee, referred to the Information Technology and General Services Committee relative to instructing the Information Technology Agency in concert with the city administrative officer to coordinate with IT staff throughout city departments to review contracts, services, and systems in active use throughout the city and identify where there may be duplications or redundancies, and identify opportunities to consolidate contracts and services within NITA to realize savings and operational efficiencies.
Mr. Harris Dawson, can I get a confirmation, you're a co-author, and Mr. Lee, you're a second?
Confirmed.
Thank you.
Confirmed.
Next.
The final verbal is a motion introduced by Councilmember Krikorian, referred to the Public Safety Committee relative to instructing the fire department to report on the details of implementing the false fire alarm program. That includes full cost recovery of sworn responses and required staff resources for successful program administration. Is there a second to this motion?
Second.
Second by Mr. Rodriguez.
And that is all, Madam President.
Okay, we have six members on the queue. Mr. Rue?
President, I move that $1,500 from the AV 1290 Fund, number 3053P, account number 281204, CD4 Redevelopment Project Services, be transferred appropriated to the Cultural Affairs Fund, number 480-30, revenue source 5301, reimbursement from other funds for a community holiday event hosted at the Barnes &amp; Noble Gallery in December 2019. I further move that the Department of Cultural Affairs be authorized to make any technical corrections or clarifications as necessary to the above instructions in order to effectuate the intent of this motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
I can't, couldn't hear who seconded it, Mr. Price? Thank you.
Corretts, second.
Oh, Mr. Corretts. Mr. Rue, do you have any others?
That's it, thank you.
Mr. Bonin?
Thank you, Madam President, just one. I therefore move that the City Council, in accordance with LA MC Section 62.132, approve the Street Banner Program promoting Venice Boulevard in downtown Mar Vista as a City of Los Angeles non-event street banner program for the period of November 2020 through November 2022, and the Council approve the content of the street banner design as attached to the documents provided to the clerk.
Thank you. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Buscaino. Mr. Buscaino?
Thank you, Madam President, two motions and a commendatory resolution. First motion is regards to property at 9515 Compton Avenue in Watts for a multifamily affordable housing development. I move that the permit be required to properly repair and resurface the street cut area in accordance with the Bureau of Engineering requirements and standards, and upon completion of the work, the repaired street cut be inspected by the Bureau of Contract Administration to maximize the longevity of the street.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Bloomingfield, next, Mr. Buscaino?
Thank you. I move that the Bureau of Engineering be authorized to issue a revocable permit to Charles Wheeler, subject to satisfaction of the conditions for issuing such permit, to allow for the
Hold on for just a second, Mr. Buscaino, you froze. Can we get ATA to fix this? Mr. Buscaino, I need you to start again because we had an internet connection issue. So go ahead and start the second one one more time.
Sure, sure. Hold on, I'm still on. The move that the Bureau of Engineering be authorized to issue a revocable permit to Charles Wheeler, subject to satisfaction of the conditions for issuing such permit, to allow for the installation of fencing within the public right of way at 25322 South McCoy Avenue as part of the McCoy 255 community housing development.
A second?
Please.
Second.
Thank you.
Second by Mr. Krikorian.
And lastly, a commendatory resolution for our friend Dr. Richard Vladovic, after 50-plus years serving in the educational field, that have been marked by selflessness and commitment wherein he is led by example with kindness and immeasurable skill, so let it be resolved that by the adoption of this resolution, the L.A. City Council hereby commends Dr. Richard A. Vladovic for his exceptional service to the residents of Los Angeles, congratulates him on his professional accomplishments, and extends best wishes for a well-deserved retirement.
Corretts, second.
Thank you.
There's a second by Mr. Cor, I'm sorry, Mr. Corretts. Is that the last one, Mr. Buscaino?
That's it, thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Ms. Rodriguez.
Yes, thank you, I have a resolution that reads, now therefore be it resolved with the concurrence of the mayor, that the adoption of this resolution, the City of Los Angeles includes in its 2019-2020 federal legislative program, opposition to any administrative action by the Trump administration to privatize Fannie Mae and Freddie Mac, and support for any legislative or administrative action that provides for debt forgiveness and restructuring loan programs for lending institutions, lending institutions, to provide relief for homeowners and commercial real estate loans.
Second.
Second by Mr. Bloomingfield, any others, Ms. Rodriguez?
That's it.
Mr. Corretts?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and Madam President. The moving clause of my motion is, I therefore move that the Department of Neighborhood Empowerment, the City Attorney, and any other relevant department recognize an extended elected term of office for current Westside Neighborhood Council Board members, and that their in-person selection town hall be delayed until it is safe to do so in Los Angeles, no later than March 2022. Second.
Second by Mr. Bloomingfield. So Corretts, you have another, another...
No, that's it, thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Lee.
Thank you, Madam President. Today, along with Councilmember Bloomingfield, a commendatory resolution for someone who's been a good friend to the West Valley and to the entire city, he's retiring, Mr. Ken Ferrusman, that many of you know, is retiring, and we'd just like to send him off with this. Ken didn't always give you the answer you wanted, but he always gave you the, he always got back to you with that answer. So therefore be it resolved that by adoption of this resolution, the Los Angeles City Council does hereby commend and recognize Ken Ferrusman for his 31 years of dedicated and exemplary public service to the people of Los Angeles, and extends to him and his family wishes for good health and happiness as he embarks on his well-earned retirement, and this is seconded by Councilmember Rodriguez.
Confirmed, thank you.
Will you confirm by Ms. Rodriguez?
I confirm my co-presentation, Bloomingfield.
And Mr. Bloomingfield. Thank you, any others, Mr. Lee?
No, Madam President.
Mr. Bloomingfield?
Right, thank you, this motion deals with the wrath or the proliferation of illegal casinos and gambling that has been going on for years, but has been particularly bad in my district and in the San Fernando Valley of late. There's been a lot of high-profile busts of some of these illegal establishments, and the, it is asking for a report back. The moving clause specifically says, I therefore move that the City Council instruct the Los Angeles Department of Building and Safety, in consultation with the Department of City Planning, Los Angeles Department of Water and Power, and the Los Angeles Police Department, to report back with 60, within 60 days on tools that could be adopted to deter and civilly punish operation, the operators of illegal gambling establishments, including but not limited to LED WP shut-offs, certificate of occupancy, holes of revocations, permit prohibitions on the same or related properties, fines, and scorched earth penalties.
Second.
It's been seconded by Ms. Rodriguez. Any others, Mr. Bloomingfield?
That's it, thank you.
Okay, thank you, see no other members on the queue. Madam Clerk, what's next?
Council has motions for posting and referral, the motions will be...
Excuse me? I'm so sorry, Mr. Sadio, seems, Mr. Sadio, you have your virtual hand up?
Yes, foreclose in memory.
I'm sorry, say that, say that one more time?
Yes, I'm waiting to close the memory.
Okay.
Adjourn in memory.
Those are, those are posted and referred. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Members, are there any announcements? Okay, Mr. Rue, is this an announcement or a adjournment motion?
Announcement, ma'am.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Rue.
Thank you, Madam President, and this presentation is bittersweet. Well, I'm incredibly happy for Daryl Powell that many of you know, and want to send him off with well wishes that we can offer. You know, the city today is losing a dedicated public servant and a genuinely kind person who put his heart into his work as well as, to all the friendships he had with his colleagues. Daryl started with the city service in February 1984 with the City Administrative Office as a junior administrative assistant. In February 1986, Daryl began working in the Office of the Legislative Analyst, where he served the majority of his time with the city. Daryl performed a number of important duties, including analyzing state and federal legislation and preparing motions and reports for the City Council. He also managed the CLA's desk during City Council meetings, prepared the staff briefing manuals for new members of the City Council, developed the city's policy on naming of communities, and was a member of the mayor's affirmative action task force and the League of California Cities Welfare Reform Task Force. Most importantly, he has consistently displayed a professional, kind, calm, and friendly demeanor that should be a model for all those who work for our city. At the end of this year, Daryl is retiring from the city after over 35 years of faithful and dedicated service, and I would like to wish Daryl, his wife of over 30 years, Gail, and their children, Daryl, Austin, and Ashley, all the best. And Daryl, I wish we could have done this in person, here's your proclamation, but from the bottom of my heart, I wish to thank you and commend you for your years of exemplary service to the city and the people of Los Angeles. We wish you success and happiness in all of your future endeavors. Thank you, Daryl.
Thank you, Mr. Rue. Any other announcements, members? Adjournment motions, Mr. Sadio?
Yes, Madam Chair, let me, I'd like to adjourn in the memory of one of the greatest Bruins, one of the greatest Americans, one of the greatest Olympians in the history of our nation. Rafer Johnson attended UCLA because he was inspired by the presence of Ralph Brunch, the Nobel Peace winner, Jackie Robinson. He was student body president at UCLA, he ran track and field, had historic battles with CK Yang, he was the decathlon champion, he, son of a Texas farm worker who grew up in the Central Valley, Kingston, California. He is one of the most extraordinary figures in sports, but also in broadcasting and in politics of our time. He was a very diplomatic man, very gentleman, and it was an honor this year, not this year, recently, to meet him at the City Hall Chambers and to speak to him. He was going to quote lobby me for support for the Olympics in Los Angeles, which is kind of a joke in a sense because I obviously support the Olympics here in Los Angeles, and so we were able to meet and spend some time in the back, and then through some of our many events supporting the Olympics, I got to see him and know him slightly. Just an extraordinary human being. Many will also recall that he was the person who, when Senator Robert Kennedy was assassinated, was the person who took the gun away from Sharon Sirhan. So just a extraordinary, extraordinary human being, Olympian, Bruin, Angelino, and someone that we should all aspire to maintain his type of class and dignity and his disposition for life, so, thank you.
Madam President, can I add?
Yes, Mr. Rue.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, Mr. Sadio, I just heard of Rafer's passing as well. You know, he was a friend, he was somebody that I got to meet during my tenure. He was a resident of Sherman Oaks, and we also served on an alumni board at UCLA together, the Order of the Blue Shield, and you know, he was such a kind and gentle soul who, you know, despite everything, all of his accomplishments that Mr. Sadio presented, he was such a true human being, and he was such, he was like a next-door neighbor, a next-door neighbor you want to live next door to. And he was so friendly, he was always welcoming, you know, he was a pleasure to see throughout the years and meet, and he will be sorely missed, and our city, our Council District Four, our city, our nation, and the world lost one of our heroes. Thank you, Mr. Sadio.
Thank you, Mr. Rue.
Madam President...
Mr. Wesson?
If I could join Mr. Sadio in this adjournment motion, and Mr. Rue and Gilbert have said phenomenal things about Rafer, he was just a special, kind, human being, and Gilbert, I had the pleasure to meet him, it is a great loss. You know, I, sometimes when people pass on, I think about the times in which they grew up, and it was so, it's challenging today. I just wonder how challenging and the difficulties that he had to deal with back then, things that he had to overcome. He could be, could have been so mean and bitter towards the system, and he was like the exact opposite. So he will be sorely missed, and it's appropriate that this council adjourn in the memory of a phenomenal... So I join Mr. Sadio in this adjournment.
Madam President?
Yes, yes, Mr. Krikorian, I have other members on the queue, by the way. Go ahead, Mr. Krikorian.
I just wanted to, I didn't know if they were going to speak about Rafer Johnson or other adjournments, I apologize. But I just wanted to add that in addition to the point that Mr. Wesson just made, this is, this was a man who also could have been very full of himself. In 1960, he won the gold medal in the decathlon and was named the greatest athlete in the world, and that's what the Olympic gold medalist in the decathlon is proclaimed. And he could have been a man of, you know, who was, who was...
There you go.
Had a, had a big head about that, but he wasn't. He was a man of incredible humility and caring and compassion, who was involved in so many of our community events in the valley and elsewhere, and maybe most notably was one of the nation's real champions of the Special Olympics, and gave so much to those young people participating in the Special Olympics, and I just, I'm so sorry to hear of his passing... And I just... I'm so sorry to hear of his passing. He was a great fixture in this city. And I think it's appropriate that Mr. Sadio adjourned this met meeting in particular in honor of Rafer Johnson, the same meeting in which we are awarding funding from the Olympics to help uplift young people in neighborhoods who would otherwise be deprived of recreational activities but for this Olympic agreement. And it's appropriate that this is the meeting that we recognize a great Olympic champion and a great contributor to lifting up people in need throughout our city and throughout the country.
Mr. Price?
I just want to join my colleagues in just acknowledging the tremendous role that he played, Johnson played, you know, not just as an athlete, but as a human and as a humanitarian, certainly known all over the world for what he did in athletics. But he was always a universal hero, any black hero. Was well-respected in the black community whenever he was present, wherever he expressed himself, whenever he was involved, always working to assist those less able to fend for themselves. And so he was a real Olympic champion, as Mr. Krikorian pointed out, from the '60s on. And it was a role he wore well, very humble, very unassuming, but always willing to help. And so he will be sorely missed throughout the world and especially in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Price. Mr. Sadio, we can make this an all-member adjournment in honor of Mr. Rafer Johnson, so thank you. Mr. O'Farrell?
Yes, Madam President. Yeah, I had my hand up because I also wanted to weigh in on Mr. Rafer Johnson.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Everybody starts to weigh in, and I'm trying to go by order of virtual hands, but I apologize to you. Go ahead, sir.
I think it's really important that we all adjourn in his memory, and I want to thank Mr. Sadio for leaning in and honoring him today since we won't meet again. And I think it's important that we state with one unified voice that he... Rafer Johnson represented the best of all of us as Angelinos. He also represented the very best of what the Olympic spirit is all about, faster, higher, stronger. He was a booster of the Olympics. He was a booster of Los Angeles. I doubt the '84 Olympics would have even been in Los Angeles, certainly wouldn't have been as successful as they were without his direct input, without his direct collaboration with Mayor Tom Bradley and his work and his belief in the Olympic movement. And he was so many firsts. He broke the decathlon world record in 1955, going into the Melbourne Olympics, where he was expected to win the gold medal then while in college, and if not for a knee injury where he still managed to win the silver medal. Then he comes back, he goes back to UCLA, becomes the class president at UCLA, works in a hamburger joint after winning a silver medal in the Olympics. Then he goes to Rome in 1960 and wins the gold. His life story is a story of perseverance. It's a story of living an inspired life, making the most of incredible difficulty, suffering the effects of racism, and transcending all of that and emerging as a champion in the world. One story that I love, and I see that the L.A. Times published this in their obituary, is that he went to Moscow during his sports career, I think it was before the Olympics, and competed with then a decathlon champion, Kuznetsov, a Russian. And he competed in Moscow against Kuznetsov, and when he won, the fans stormed the stadium. And Rafer Johnson felt that he was about to be attacked, but instead they lifted him up and feeded him in glory and celebrated his win against... And this is in the Soviet Union during the height of the Cold War, and they celebrated this black athlete from the United States, which helped break barriers across the world when this occurred. And so he is the story of legend. He is the ultimate Olympic booster because he knows what it means and he knows what it can do. And by his example, we can all strive to be faster, higher, stronger, and live the ideals of integrity and a life full of purpose and overcoming difficulties. And so I'm just happy that we're elevating him on this very, very sad day. Los Angeles has lost a hero, and we're all better for him coming to council all those times and speaking and supporting our efforts. And so Rafer Johnson, thank you for all you've done. God bless your family and may you rest in peace. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Farrell. So we will adjourn in memory of Rafer Johnson in today's meeting. So if there are any other adjournments, adjournments? Okay, seeing none, our meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
But please don't let that be a reason that you don't cast a ballot because you're not ready. Just vote for the things that you're ready for and cast a ballot. Have something to say about the things that are important to you.
Sean, I imagine you're already ready right now.
I've done a little bit of research, but not as much as I should, I'd say.
So what are the areas in an election that you are most interested in? I mean, are you looking at the national scale, or are you, as Sarah spoke, all of the...